Johnson.
Here.
Melton.
Here.
Palermo is absent. Rowe.
Here.
Bagley.
Here.
Harding.
Here.
Mr. President.
Here. Thanks for rising for the pledge, then I'll provide opening remarks. I'll just provide two comments before we get started. One, I want to say congratulations to the Empowerment Network for another successful annual meeting they had last Friday. They hosted Magic Johnson in Omaha, which was pretty neat, but a great conference with lots of great sessions. And maybe most gratifying was a number of cities throughout the Midwest in particular, here to learn about how we've done that and how we've done that well. And we certainly have a lot more work to do in our city, but an indication of the success we've had by partnering with a broad coalition of folks to address poverty and violence prevention. And then secondly, obviously, it's College World Series week. I want to say congratulations to all the teams that just found out that they're going. The last couple last night. Hopefully, we have weather like this today all week long for everyone. I know Omaha is going to put its best feet forward. As you know, this is a huge economic impact to our city, approaching about 90 million per year. So a big deal for us that we take very seriously, and we wish all the teams the best of luck.
An affidavit publication is on file for the pre-council and city council meeting, and a current copy of the Open Meeting Act is posted in a white binder on the east wall of legislative chambers.
Public hearing and vote on number six is today. We have the applicant by Zoom. We'll get you off mute here in a minute.
Yes?
Yeah, name and address, please.
Chinapat, C-H-I-N-N-A-P-A-T. My last name is W-I-R-A-C-H-A-K-U-L. Platoon Thai, name of the business, and the name of the company is Babylon Inc., and the address is 5092 South 136th Street, Omaha, Nebraska, 68137.
Great, thank you. Are there any other proponents that want to speak today? Seeing none any opponents. Public hearings close. I'll note for council members, this would take a waiver of the park rule. Mr. Rowe, you're recognized.
I'd like to move for approval with waiver of the park rules.
Just motion in a second. Roll call.
Johnson. Melton.
Yes.
Rowe. Bagley.
Aye.
Harding.
Yes.
Mr. President.
Yes.
Motion passed six to zero. Item seven, to consider a Class D liquor license for Redmond Supermarket located at 4205 Redmond Avenue is communication opposition.
Public hearing and vote on number seven is today. Proponents, please.
I'm Mr. President, members of the council. Mike Kelly, 2804 South 37th Avenue. This is for a license set 42nd and Redmond. Mr. Ali was here before, about eight months ago. Give you a little history on this property, its location. There's been a C store there for 30 years, and it's always had a B license, beer-only license, for that entire time. And I don't know if it was a year, year and a half ago. Don't hold me to the time exactly, but the prior owner was robbed and beaten up. Bad enough he was hospitalized. He allowed the license to lapse. Wasn't canceled or revoked or anything. It just lapsed. Then in steps Tariq here, and he purchased the building, put over $200,000 of improvements into it to set it up. His plan is to turn it into more of a grocery supermarket. He has already purchased large coolers, freezers, which will all be grocery frozen, but grocery products. He has also purchased, it's not on the location yet, a dairy, full dairy case that will also be there with, you know, the traditional dairy product, eggs, milk, butter, et cetera. And he also, I think the more exciting thing, is he would also offer fruits and vegetables limited, but they would have fresh fruits and vegetables, you know, the standard fare lettuce, tomatoes, potatoes, et cetera, with some bananas, apples, and so on, depending on the season. That's his plan. You also need to know about his history. He started and bought a building and a property in North Omaha in 2014. And additionally, he's had two more stores that he started, not all supermarkets, but he has stores, three of them. And so he started in 2014. He's had about 16 years of experience, if you combine them all. They've, he's had a good record. He has failed two compliance checks in 16 years. Last one was four years ago. So they're doing good there. He trains everybody. He's probably made somewhere between $700,000 and $1 million in investment in North Omaha, counting this property. Probably somewhere between 15 and 20 full-time jobs. So again, he was here about eight months ago, and I don't really want to talk about that hearing. I wasn't there. I did see it, though. Didn't come off well, we just limited it to that. Some conflicting answers, poor answers were given. This time, he's reached out to the neighborhood. I have given the clerk, we took, we canvassed the neighborhood, and we've got over 200 signatures of almost entirely local residents, and the clerk has that, has that document. He's also canvassed and went door-to-door for within 1,000 feet of the location and got overwhelmingly positive response. And not everybody answered the door, of course, but for those that did, we got positive responses. I guess that's it. I think there's a couple people in the neighborhood here to support it, and Tariq is here for questions.
Thank you.
Oh, but probably the number one thing I should have said to begin with. We've applied for a D license, but at the request of Council Lady Johnson, we are willing to reduce that to a B. B license, beer only, if that's the well of the council.
Great, thank you. Any other proponents that want to speak today?
There's a couple now.
Are you a proponent? Yep, come on down. Just name an address there.
Okay.
Name and address.
My name is Karina Harris, and my address is 5402 Fontana Boulevard. And I think it'd be a great idea because I live really close to that store, and it'd be helpful for me to have a grocery store within the area that I don't have to travel too far to go to, you know, and offering such produce and everything would be good for my children as well, you know, and there's a lot of people within this area, you know, some disabled as well, that'd be able to have access more to a grocery store. So it'd benefit not just myself, but a lot of people in the area.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks for coming. Any other proponents today? Seeing none any opponents.
Donnie Johnson, the Johnson and Question Foundation, 4928 North 52nd Street, Omaha, Nebraska, and Concerned Citizen Foundation. I've seen these young men who have done a wonderful job. I'd like to take the opportunity to let them join the Omaha Chamber of Commerce and the United States Senate Chamber of Commerce. You're more than welcome.
Any other opponents to number seven? Seeing none, public hearings closed. Ms. Johnson, you're recognized.
Thank you, Mr. President. I just want to say thank you for doing the following things, and that is doing the door-to-door engagement in the community in which you'll be providing a service to, very much needed. Also, providing produce. I would also like to thank you for the million-dollar investment that you have generated in the Omaha community, and more importantly, the opportunities for employment. With that being said, it should be duly noted that this occupancy, this building already had, previously had a liquor license, and so we're just reenacting that liquor license to allow for beer sales only. And for that, I would go ahead and move that, this be accepted with that adjustment.
So the motion should be to amend to a B, and then we would adopt as amended?
So I move to amend to a B.
I'll second. Mr. Bagley, you're recognized.
Thanks, Mr. President. Mr. Kelly, thanks for being here today with your client. And I know eight months ago, is that what it was, you said that?
Something like that.
That hearing was, yeah. That was a tough day for him, because through no fault of your own, maybe he just didn't understand the process at that time.
I was embarrassed, and I didn't, I was just watching it on TV.
Yeah, we can only do so much from, from the council side, as you know, but I, as Councilmember Johnson said, I also want to commend you for making the effort, not only investing in the community with jobs, but the things that we talked about in that meeting were, besides alcohol, were things that are important to families, as the young lady testified here a little bit ago. And you made the effort, you reach out to the community, to the council member, and that is a textbook example of how to do business in the city, and I'm glad to support this today, and thanks for coming back and, and your patience to succeed, and you make great steps in that, and your efforts here today that I'm glad to support. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Now, for the lights, there's a motion to amend, and a second to amend to a Class B. Roll call.
Johnson.
Yes.
Melton.
Yes.
Rowe. Bagley.
Aye.
Harding. Mr. President.
Yes.
Motion passed six to zero.
Thank you, thank you for that.
Thank you.
Now a motion to amend.
As amended.
I move to approve this as amended.
Second.
Motion in a second. Roll call.
Johnson.
Yes.
Melton.
Yes.
Rowe.
Yes.
Bagley.
Aye.
Harding.
Yes.
Mr. President.
Yes.
Motion passed six to zero.
Thanks.
Item eight, to consider a liquor license addition application for Village Inn 110801, located at 3839 North 138th Street, to add an outdoor area.
Public hearing and vote on number eight is today. Proponents, please.
Yes, cur swing for Village Inn, located 3839 North 138th Street. We're adding a patio, and we're just looking for an addition of it, the liquor license.
Great, thank you. Any other proponents today? Seeing none any opponents. Public hearings closed. Ms. Melton.
I just wanted to say, if anybody hasn't seen the new look to the Village Inn, it's a great look, the place, I mean, totally looks amazing.
Thank you.
And so I think the outdoor, especially with the nice weather we're having now, will be great. Go have coffee and breakfast outside, or later in the evening, you're served drinks.
We're only open seven to three right now?
Pardon?
We're only open seven to three currently?
Currently, are you going to open in the evenings later?
We're, we're looking at it right now. It just depends on how business is doing.
All right, well, I wish you the best of luck, and I'm, I really love the new look, so I'll move to approve it.
Motion in a second. No further lights. Roll call.
Johnson.
Yes.
Melton.
Yes.
Rowe.
Yes.
Bagley.
Aye.
Harding.
Yes.
Mr. President.
Yes.
Motion passed six to zero.
Thank you.
Items nine through 11 can be considered together for property located southwest of 46th and Dodge Streets. Planning Board and Planning Department recommend approval. Item nine, in ordinance, rezone this property from R7 District, G-O District, G-C District, and G-I District to G-O District. Item 10, in ordinance, to amend the boundaries of the ACI 2 overlay district to incorporate this property into that district. Item 11, a resolution to approve a special use permit to allow surface parking in the G-O District.
Public hearing and vote on items nine, 10, and 11 are today. Proponents, please.
Afternoon, council members. My name is Dan Dolezal, Eric Griffin Associates, 3552 Farm Street, I'm the project engineer. This is really a significant project, and this is the first phase. You'll see me again in a few more weeks. This, what we have before us today is the west side of 46th and the parking that we're providing for the campus expansion that we're doing on the east side of 46th Street. CSI is a long, Child Saving Institute, has a long history of doing some really phenomenal things in the community, and this expansion is going to allow them to further fulfill their mission. It's going to do, it's going to be a beautiful building, it's going to clean up 46th and Dodge on that intersection, it's going to provide a great gateway to the south, and I won't go into great detail, but I'm here for answers to any questions you have.
Thank you. Drove by today, and it's well underway. Any other proponents today? Seeing none any opponents.
Larry Store, 5015 Lafayette Avenue, Omaha, 68132. I wished we'd had a slide presentation, because my visions of the area may not be exactly correct, but I'm usually opposed to tax increment financing, which this apparently is going to lead to. Correct me if I'm wrong, I believe this is the area directly west of and next to the viaduct over Saddle Creek Road. It's quite apparent that the work is largely already been done from there up to the 10 little houses on Harmony Street, which are probably next in line, along with the other businesses on Dodge Street going west. So this is, lack of transparency is what I'm getting at. The average citizen cannot follow all of the meetings, starting with the Planning Commission, that lead up to these things. But it's already cut and dried, it's decided by the Planning Director, Planning Commit Department. But here they are, saying it's a public hearing, and they're recommending adoption of it. I recommend against it until we find out what all is going to be added to this project from there to 50th and Dodge, Harmony Street and Dodge. And why do we have to preserve a lot, an old veterinarian clinic? If we're going to have all new buildings, why preserve the veterinarian clinic for history? Not that many people care about that building. I don't think this is only related to the Child Saving Institute, it's maybe part of it, but as I drive that area quite often to and from here, that must be the area I'm thinking of, and there's 10, I think 10 little houses from there up towards 50th, it would have been very nice, affordable housing. Now, whether in fact somebody paid a good price to buy that, all of those houses, to develop them, I don't know. I can't go to all these meetings, so we never talk about it here. So I'm basically against it until we have an open, maybe a town hall about it, so the public can better understand what it is you're doing, and we don't have to think that the wool's getting pulled over our eyes. I'd like to develop too, if I could get financing, if I could get TIF, I'd go around town developing. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other opponents?
Donnie Johnson, the Johnson and Question Foundation, North Omaha Concerned Citizen Foundation. I have no opposing to this, I would just recommend that if these gentlemen would put the Omaha Chamber of Commerce and the United States Senate Chamber of Commerce, so we can keep records of how much is going on.
All right, Donnie, it has to be to this, this development.
Don't sell the Omaha Chamber of Commerce today? Okay, I'll be back.
Any other opponents? Seeing none, public hearings closed. Mr. Harding, you're recognized.
Before I comment, I'll ask, can I, can I make comments on this or not, since I'm going to be recusing on this? But I can, am I still allowed to make a comment? Okay, thanks, Deanna. Actually, I was just going to make a general comment to previous testimony that was given. It's the, some of the items that were mentioned that they thought was a part of this project, that's not a part of this project, and by getting up and giving misinformation in a manner to question transparency, which this board and the Planning Department are fully transparent on this issue, I think does a disservice to the citizens of Omaha, and in, in particular, to this project. So I just wanted to state that on the record, that those, the comments about the abutting properties have nothing to do with this, this is all about CSI.
Thank you, Mr. Bagley.
Thanks, Mr. President. I'll make a motion to approve these items today, and thanks for being here, and I've watched the progress of that, and we've had multiple discussions in this building since I've been on the council. Talked to neighbors up there about some frustrations they had, but this thing's moving forward. The Pittman Veterinary Clinic, as we discussed before, is going to be the soul of this new development.
That's actually the development next to us.
Yeah.
We're stopping short of that development.
Yeah, but the whole, this whole area, west of Saddle Creek, south to Dodge, all that up there, obviously, 46th Street is closed off. This is just a great reinvigorating that part of town that's been kind of going by the wayside for quite a while, and the development of that, and all the activities with the med center in that area, it's going to be a great thing for the city of Omaha, and certainly District Three, so I'll be supporting these today, motion to support these. Thank you.
I might add again that the Planning Department, probably Works Department have been so terrific to work with. I mean, this is a complicated project with so many different aspects of it, and to coordinate with them is, and it went really, really well, so my hat's off to them.
Thank you. There's a motion, and I'll second. No further lights. Roll call.
Johnson.
Yes.
Melton.
Yes.
Rowe.
Yes.
Bagley.
Aye.
Harding. Mr. President.
Yes.
Motion passed five to zero. Harding abstains. Item 12, a resolution to rescind the Central Park Plaza Tax Increment Financing Redevelopment Project Plan.
Public hearing and vote on number 12 is today. Proponents, please.
Good afternoon, Bridget Hadley, City Planning. This rescission represents a TIF redevelopment project plan that was approved by the City Council January of last year for a office project concept. However, it became inactive. The project owner anticipates a revised project concept coming forward and is working with the mayor's office on this revised project. And with that, I am here to answer any other questions.
Thank you. Any other proponents? Seeing none any opponents. Public hearings closed. Ms. Johnson, you're recognized.
Thank you, Mr. President. This question is for Bridget. When I look at this attachment that was included in here, I don't see any explanation as to why we're doing what we're doing.
So we have a practice in our Planning Department that when we have a TIF application that is in the process of being approved from the time we receive the application evaluated, goes to committee, planning board, and then city council twice for the plan, and then the agreement. If it never makes it through, and it becomes dormant for a period of time with no activity over nine months to a year, then we will cancel it. So I was in touch with this applicant to find out what was going on. There was no activity, nothing for a period of, for at least nine months to a year, and so it was canceled.
Okay, I, do you think that there is some value in providing supportive documentation of things when we're going to do, just for the purpose of transparency?
What type of supportive documents would you be talking about?
Just what you just said, that there, there was no communications for nine months, that kind of a thing. I would have liked to have seen that attached to this, just so that we give the perception of being above board, and also it would help educate and provide information to the overall community, especially when we have folks that are coming up questioning what we're doing. Earlier, we had a comment about something, maybe it was off point, but nonetheless, the perception in terms of how that individual processed the information kind of puts us into that ballpark. So if, so I would just feel a lot more comfortable if we would provide supportive documentation on what is happening as to why we're making the recommendation to table this.
So happy to do that in the future. I could just tell you, probably for the last four, five, or more years, we come before you with projects that are applications, TIF applications, that are canceled for that same reason, and whenever they come forward, I usually will say, this is why, and will say that it's because it's been dormant for about nine, nine months to a year, no activity, and so it's canceled. But I'm more than happy to maybe add a little more language into the resolution or if it's in ordinance.
Thank you, I appreciate that. I move to accept the motion.
I'll second. Good.
Well, I was going to say I'll second, but I think there's multiple.
Yep, motion in a second. Ms. Melton, you're recognized.
Thanks, I just want to say thank you to Ms. Hadley. I appreciate it, I know there probably isn't documentation showing nothing, so I understand that it's due to lack of documentation and lack of work on the projects, and, and I appreciate you're always at pre-council, you're always available, and I appreciate all the efforts that you're making. Also, outside of your normal job in TIF projects, you've been, you will travel around and explain TIF to other groups, which helps the public with items such as this, when they come on the agenda, where you're explaining how TIF applications are approved, but also how they can also be rescinded if they aren't doing the work on it, which this is an example of. So I appreciate your additional work outside your normal work hours, where you're educating people all over our city. So I, I think for the last 10 years, I've taken your word on things like there's been no activity, and I understand that there's probably little documentation to support no activity, so I appreciate it.
Mr. Harding, you're recognized.
Thank you. Maybe, maybe we're not all getting the same information, because I'm, the cover letter clearly states, the redevelopment project never materialized, thus, the city of Omaha, the city, is canceling and rescinding this TIF redevelopment project plan. And even before that, it mentions, it kind of recaps what the original project plan was, so to say that we don't have that documentation, as was first stated, I think is incorrect.
Ms. Johnson, you're recognized.
Thank you for pointing out your perception, Mr. Brinker, regarding how you interpret things. I do take exception to your point of reference to me regarding how I interpret things. That is where I draw the line. So again, Ms. Hadley has already agreed to provide additional supportive documentation in cases like this, and it is my responsibility as city council person to understand fully what I am approving or not approving, and it does not necessarily have to agree to your standards, but I have a moral compass, and due diligence must be viewed from my eyes for me to vote. But again, I thank you for leveling up and saying that the way I perceive things is different than you, but I must also remind you that my background is much different than yours. So we would differ. Thank you.
Thank you. There's a motion and a second to approve. No further lights. Roll call.
Johnson.
Yes.
Melton.
Yes.
Rowe.
Yes.
Bagley.
Aye.
Harding.
Yes.
Mr. President.
Yes.
Motion passed six to zero. Consent agenda, any member of the city council may cause any item placed on the consent agenda to be removed. Items removed from the consent agenda shall be taken up by the city council immediately following the consent agenda and the order in which they were removed unless otherwise provided by city council rules of order.
The public hearings on agenda items 13 through 15 were held on June 6th. There are no further lights, is there a motion?
Moving approval.
Motion in a second. Roll call.
Johnson.
Yes.
Melton.
Yes.
Rowe.
Yes.
Bagley.
Aye.
Harding. Mr. President.
Yes.
Motion passed six to zero.
Item number 22 is withdrawn at the request of the Planning Department, so that item is withdrawn.
It's 24.
Or 24, I'm sorry. So the public hearings on agenda items numbers 16 through 23 and 25 through 31 are now. If you wish to address the city council regarding these items, please come to the microphone, indicate the agenda item number you wish to address, identify yourself by name, address, indicate the agenda item number you wish to address, identify yourself by name, address, and who you represent, and if you are a proponent or an opponent.
Louis Jimenez, twenty-seven oh nine Dewey Avenue. Congratulations to the new officers. I support, I also want to say that I support the resolution twenty-nine. It's a agreement with Douglas County Community Mental Health Center. The total amount not to exceed forty-five thousand dollars for approximately six months from July first to the twenty, uh, to December thirty-first, to provide a protective custody program and facility for intoxicated individuals is hereby approved. There has been ongoing discussions about mental health with Douglas County. It's good to see that the city can step forward and help out. I did tell Douglas County that they need to look at, there are no inter-local agreements and do more with them. But on the issue of mental health, there is, the, the one thing that the county needs is funding, funds. If you guys can find funding to help their community mental health center have a inter-local agreement for that purpose, that would be very helpful. They need more than forty-five thousand as they, you know, plan for, for the coming years. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other testifiers on sixteen through twenty-three or twenty-five through thirty-one?
Larry Store, five oh one five Lafayette Avenue, Omaha, six eight one three two. I'm against number twenty-nine. I think from a common sense standpoint, that we heard about this this morning at Douglas County. And again, I think from a matter of transparency more than anything else, the city and the county ought to get a present something to us on this, because it just kind of smells as, well, if we don't get it through the county, we'll get it through the city. You're agreeing to seventy-five hundred, seventy-five hundred dollars a month going to Douglas County. Well, maybe this is out of Keno funds and maybe it isn't. But if people in the morning session for the county says, we don't want to do this, I guess there'll be an amendment coming, say, oh, well, later on, we'll do it because the city's going to give us seventy-five hundred. Or you will approve it all by yourself and make a separate agreement with Douglas County. But please, let's do not mix up mental health problems with intoxication. There's a difference. You want a separate building only for intoxicated people, then go do it. Don't put it in together with inmates that have mental health problems rather than intoxication. Separate them. Let's go back to the old poor forms if we have to. Let's stop all this in unnecessary spending. We have social service agencies out there that you also already support.
Any other testifiers on these items? Seeing none, public hearings closed. Ms. Melton, you're recognized.
Thank you. I just wanted to explain on, on twenty-nine, actually, the city used to contract, we used to take intoxicated individuals to a Catholic charities place just north of St. Francis many years ago. They since closed down and weren't, weren't taking people. So currently, Omaha police officers that have people maybe who have been overly served or has drank a little too much and passed out in the street, they need to take them somewhere. So currently, their two options would be the Douglas County Correctional Center, which that's where they would be with inmates, or we have this agreement with Douglas County for forty-five thousand, thirty-two thousand basically comes from Keno funds as well. So this actually saves the taxpayer dollars, because if we were to have to build our own building and serve that building just for intoxicated individuals, that would cost us millions. So I really appreciate the agreement that we have with the county, that they allow Omaha police to take people to this facility so that they can kind of sober up and get back home safely maybe the next day without having to book them into the correctional center and pay the, the fees to have them in our jails. So I, I think this is a great deal, and it's a great service. And by the way, it's also one that we're required to provide and a place that Omaha police needs to be able to take these people to. So hopefully, we won't see too many going there over the College World Series, but you know, this is a, this is a great partnership that we have that saves taxpayer dollars. Thank you.
Thank you. No further lights, is there a motion?
Move the approval of twenty, move the approval of sixteen to twenty-three, twenty-five to thirty.
Motion and a second. Roll call.
Johnson, Melton, Rowe, Bagley, Harding. Mr. President.
Yes.
Motion passed six to zero. Item thirty-two, in ordinance to approve a major amendment to the Falling Waters Commercial Mixed Use Development Agreement. Planning Board and Planning Department recommend approval.
Public hearing on number thirty-two is today.
My name is Jason Pearl. I'm with Olson. I'm here to represent Lockwood Development and ready to answer any questions.
Thanks. Your address, too, for the record?
Um, four oh seven South Hundred Fifty Second Circle.
Okay, thank you. Any other proponents? Seeing none, any opponents? Public hearing is closed.
Item thirty-three, in ordinance to approve an agreement with Excela Inc. for permit software services.
Public hearing on number thirty-three is today. Proponents, please.
Good afternoon, Bobby Wernley, IT Coordinator for the city and the mayor's office, eighteen nineteen Farnham Street. Here to answer any questions you may have.
Good afternoon, Stu Craven, Applications Development Manager, Planning, just here to answer any questions.
Phil Velardi with Excela Inc., county executive supporting the central U.S. Also fourteen ten South Eighty-Fifth Avenue, six eight one two four.
Thank you. Any other proponents today? Seeing none, any opponents?
Larry Store, five oh one five Lafayette Avenue, Omaha, six eight one three two. I, I'm against it because I don't think the city should be in the business of apartment building. But then this might be connected to the university development plan, which is moving along finally down Saddle Creek Road and West.
This is a sole source of agreement for-
If I'm not mistaken, this building, this address is already being almost finished.
No, you have to be on topic here.
Excuse me, Pete, please.
This is software agreement.
I'm against this because I think it's already practically-
You're not addressing the right topic. All right. Any other opponents to number thirty-three, which is a software package for the planning department? Seeing none, public hearing is closed. Next time.
Item thirty-four, in ordinance to approve the Leavenworth Law's Tax Increment Financing Redevelopment Agreement.
Public hearing on number thirty-four is today. Proponents, please.
Uh, yeah, good afternoon, Don Seaton, City Planning. I'm here for any questions you may have.
Thank you. Any other proponents?
Good afternoon, Charlie Sullivan, one one five one six Miracle Hills Drive. I'm the developer of the project and just here to answer any questions.
Thank you. Other proponents? Seeing none, any opponents to number thirty-four?
I apologize, I thought you were on thirty-four.
Got it, thank you. Public hearing is closed. Next time.
Item thirty-five, in ordinance to accept the bid of Quality Containers LLC in the amount of a hundred thousand dollars to provide rubbish container service for the Parks Department.
Public hearing on number thirty-five is today. Proponents, please. Seeing none, any opponents? Public hearing is closed.
Item thirty-six, in ordinance to accept the quote from Hectorino Cleaning LLC to provide janitorial services for an Omaha police department.
Public hearing on number thirty-six is today. Proponents, please. Seeing none, any opponents? Public hearing is closed.
Item thirty-seven, in ordinance to approve an interlocal agreement with Douglas County for the prosecution of criminal cases.
Public hearing on number thirty-seven is today. Proponents, please. Seeing none, any opponents? Public hearing is closed.
Item thirty-eight, Martin Outdoor Advertising appeals the rejection of their bid for May tenth, twenty twenty-three for bus bench advertising and maintenance.
Item number thirty-eight is a bid rejection appeal. It is not a public hearing, but I believe we have the appellant by Zoom. Uh, we'll get you off mute here in a second and give you a chance to explain your appeal. Okay, try that.
Yes, sir.
All right, name and address, and then you want to tell us about your bid appeal?
Absolutely. Uh, my name is Scott Martin. I'm with Martin Outdoor Advertising. My address right now is eight two seven two Northwest Sixty-sixth Street in Doral, Florida, three three three, um, one, one six. Shall I begin?
Yes, go ahead.
Okay. Um, our company, uh, which has been awarded contracts throughout the United States, uh, in Florida, California, Utah, Colorado, um, we, we've, we have been, we have been looking at the city of Omaha for about five years now. And, uh, as soon as we had the opportunity, we wanted to make sure that we, uh, were able to submit a proposal. Now, I've been, uh, for probably the last year and a half, I've been in contact with Mr. Steve Slater. And he knows that, uh, how important this city is for us. And so when we were able to submit a proposal, and we, we, we proposed to install over half a million dollars worth of street furniture. I don't want to give our entire proposal away, but, um, you know, with certain services in a very, very, very competitive, um, revenue source to the city. And, um, I've, I've already, I'm, I'm sorry, I'm dealing with South Florida weather right here. I don't know if you hear the, uh, the, the thunder. But, uh, I've, I've flown out to Omaha. I've measured every single sidewalk. I've, I know which benches are ADA compliant, which ones aren't. I know which ones need to be changed. This is my world, this is what I'm good at. And, um, so I've already, the, the fact that we were, um, rejected because of fifteen hundred dollar check, considering I already spent more than fifteen hundred dollars on room and flights to go out to Omaha. And I know Councilwoman, uh, uh, she, she had mentioned the College World Series. That's the first time I was ever in Omaha, when the University of Miami was in the College World Series. So I, I'm very, very familiar with the city, and we absolutely want to do business. I want to do business with the city. I've already contacted, uh, three different truck dealerships to make sure that if, if we are fortunate enough to be awarded the contract eventually, um, that we knew that we were going to purchase our trucks, trucks from, uh, local, local dealerships. We know that we're going to set up a base with a warehouse, with an office in the city of Omaha. And that, that, that's the basis of my appeal. We would not have spent all that money if we were not one hundred percent sure that we wanted to be in this city.
Okay.
And I'm, I'm asking for the city council to please reconsider the rejection of our proposal.
Okay. Thank you. And we do appreciate your interest in doing business here. We want you to do business here. You do understand that the basis for the rejection is that there was no bid security provided, right?
Yes, I do. And, um, I was told by my, our IT person that the, um, that the, the bid bond was absolutely uploaded into the system. And I, I will personally, uh, if, 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 I'm so confident in what we do, that if, if our proposal is allowed to move forward, I will guarantee the first six months of our monthly payments to the city upfront. That's how confident I am.
Okay.
I've, I've, I've done it before.
All right. We appreciate that confidence. I think we'll hear from the city, too, and just in terms of the bid, bid, uh, process and the reason for the bid rejection, then I think we'll have some questions from council members.
All right. Thank you. Jeffrey Bloom, City of Omaha Law Department. In this situation, all bids or proposals greater than twenty thousand dollars require some sort of bid security, usually in the amount of five percent or otherwise specified. Since this was an RFP, it was a specified amount, and the bid security was set at fifteen hundred dollars. In this case, we did not receive an electronic copy of the bid security at the time of the bid opening. That's required by Omaha Municipal Code. Now, uh, we looked a little bit deeper into this, and pursuant to Omaha Municipal Code, the bid was rejected and not read at the time of the bid opening because no bid security was received by the city. Now, uh, the deadline for this RFP was May tenth, twenty twenty-three, at eleven AM. At ten thirty-two AM, uh, the bidder attempted to submit their RFP. It was rejected, and an email was sent to the bidder stating that it was rejected because they didn't respond to twenty-four items that they needed to respond to, and they also did not upload six required documents. Evidently, the bidder quickly went through and tried to correct these items, and the system then accepted their bid at ten thirty-seven AM. Now, note that in both the ten thirty-two AM email and in the ten thirty-seven AM email to the bidder, it states in bold letters that the bid bond amount was fifteen hundred dollars. And it also states that a copy of the bid bond slash acceptable substitute shall be uploaded in the response attachments section. So we looked in the response attachments section. In the bid bond upload section, the bidder submitted the following documents. A letter from the Nebraska Department of Transportation to Elizabeth Britt. I'm not familiar as far as to the relevance of that. He also submitted an affidavit for Employee Classification Act and Fair Labor Standards. He submitted a Form RC one, and he submitted a checklist of what he had to do for the RFP. But unfortunately, in that list of documents, he did not submit a, a copy of the bid security, such as a bid bond or a scan of the check or anything like that. So unfortunately, per the code, failure to submit this bid security is not a correctable error. If the bidder doesn't submit the bid security and we don't receive it, the bid's rejected and it's not read at the time. So we understand that the electronic bidding system is new. However, the bidder could have still submitted a paper bid in this situation, as we are still accepting those through the end of June. Further, when someone submits a bid electronically, per the code, the bidder does assume all risks of the electronic trans, uh, transmission. So neither the city nor the purchasing agent is liable if an interested bidder is unable to submit or we don't receive due to some sort of technical issue or something like that. The reason for all of this is that we need to keep a level playing field for all bidders or all people who are submitting requests for proposal. To grant exceptions, potentially creates favorites and could create additional problems. So, uh, the bidder chose to appeal this rejection to you, the city council, and right now, it's up to the city council to decide whether or not the bid rejection stands or they approve the appeal. Mind you, if you do vote in favor of the appellant, this does not mean that the bid will necessarily be accepted by the city. It will just go on to the department for review, along with all other valid requests for proposals. Now, there is one other side issue with this, and I think the Parks Department can speak to this as well, is that, uh, the bidder will have an opportunity to resubmit a bid, because it's my understanding that, uh, the Parks Department plans to change the specifications and reject all bids in this matter. And, uh, I believe, uh, Parks can, uh, respond to that.
Yeah, go ahead. Mr. Kalsovich, is that the intention of the Parks Department?
Matt Kalsovich, Parks and Recreation Director. Yes, we had multiple additional items that we're choosing to identify in a reissuing of- that we're choosing to identify in a reissuing of the RFP. That is correct.
Thank you.
So it'd be my opinion at this point that the appeal would essentially be moved, and they will get a chance to resubmit, should they decide to submit an RFP as far as with the new specifications.
Okay. Scott, is there something you'd like to address in that, in that mix as well in response? Or are you understanding there will be a rebid opportunity here?
Honestly, that is perfect. Thank you.
Great.
No, we're, we're very much looking forward to submitting a proposal for the city of Omaha.
Great. We hope you do. Mr. Harding, you're recognized.
I do have one question.
Okay. Let me go to council members first, then we'll come right back. Mr. Harding, you're recognized.
Sure, sure.
I'll just move to deny the appeal.
Motion to deny the appeal in a second. Okay, Scott, go ahead.
No, once, when the RFP is reissued, how quickly does the city think that the RFP will actually hit the street?
Mr. Kalsovich.
Matt Kalsovich, Parks and Recreation Director. We're in review of that right now. There's not an exact timeline, but certainly it already having come out, we're trying to move as quickly as we can on it to have this process be in place as soon as we can. So it should be very soon. I can't pin an exact day on it, but it's something we're moving quickly on, as it was already obviously something we posted as an RFP, and we're trying to process through what we've already done.
Okay. And you're obviously staying-
Thank you very much.
-in contact with Mr. Martin and any other bidders, right?
Yes.
Great. Thank you. All right. I don't see any further lights. There's a motion and a second to deny the appeal. Roll call.
Johnson. Melton.
Yes.
Rowe. Bagley. Harding. Mr. President.
Yes.
Motion passed six to zero. Non-action items, items 39 through 61, do not require public hearing or city council consideration at this meeting, but will be placed on a future agenda for public hearing and/or vote. Reason for non-action is noted after the item on the agenda, as well as the date. The item is expected to appear on agenda for consideration.
Is there a motion to adjourn? Second. Roll call.
Johnson. Melton. Rowe. Bagley. Harding. Mr. President.
Yes.
Motion passed six to zero. Meeting is adjourned at 2:51.